necessarily increase our enrollment. We've just changed the way they're getting their instruction delivered. A traditional virtual student, we wouldn't have to provide them a device unless they had, you know, specific standards. But outside of that, we wouldn't necessarily have to deploy the amount of units that we are. But in our case, these are our students. Of the approximately 15,000, 16,000 students, they are our students, whether they are brick and mortar or they're elsewhere. We're receiving, in essence, full FTE funding. And that's part of the challenge is now they, we don't have them in school every day. We don't have teachers being able to put their hands on those devices every day, doing inventorying of them, which is part of our processes, usually on a weekly basis or a bi-weekly basis that teachers would ordinarily have an opportunity of doing. That can't happen in the traditional way. So that impacts what we're doing. And again, I say, regardless of the device, this is the challenge we're under, under the current instructional, you know, needs and tools that we're having to make. I don't think anybody in this room likes this, but it is what the cost of our business, I think, right now is. Ms. Andruski, can you talk about the tracking?
So what we do is we lock them down and jam. And so that basically means that they're disabled. And we put a message on there for them to contact the school if found. As far as tracking them, they need to connect with Wi-Fi and then it's hit or miss on if you can actually get the, it's like GPS coordinates is what it does. And so that is a little bit tricky on the tracking. And that's really the best that we can do for tracking.
I think it also, if they go to register the device, trying to be a new owner.
They won't let them.
It won't let them.
Right. So we do have some return that way. They purchase them from somebody in the parking lot and they call us.
I'm going to have to suspend this discussion. You're not off the hook yet, but because you stood up more than six. It's a 5:15 time circuit for citizens' comments and I have three green cards. So you'll, and then if you ask Ms. Andruski to come back. So first, Mrs. Smith, I've got two green cards for you. Do you want to hand both of them at the sign of the agency? Or do you like me interrupting the circuit?
It's fine. Hello. Thank you. And I'm board members and superintendent. So I'm coming to you for two concerns. The first one is students changing back and forth from brick and mortar to the Citrus Virtual and vice versa, going back and forth. Now, we're in already past two weeks and students are still being moved. And there's still, it creates an inconsistency amongst the students getting their education as well as the staff. For instance, and this is happening everywhere, but I'll give myself an example. Geometry virtually is different than geometry in the brick and mortar. You can't align it. There's no way to align the virtual classes to that one. So if a student comes back to brick and mortar, then they're missing some things and there's going to be gaps. If a student goes, leaves the class and goes back to the virtual, there's some gaps. So we're creating more gaps, but we're also creating frustration amongst the staff members. The ones that are teaching full-time virtual, they're having to redo things. They're having to make all those phone calls every single day. Then they're having to now, okay, now I got a new student. I've got to get that student up to speed. And there's a lot of work involved. And then the brick and mortar, it's the same way. Then if they lose a student or they gain a student to their virtual, because some of us are also doing virtual as well as brick and mortar, then we're having to make those phone calls and try to get that student up to speed, get the teacher what we've already had and so forth. So it's just a lot of frustration amongst the staff. And also I believe it's just not good for the students. But we decided a long time ago, you've all decided that we were going to have a cut time, that we're going to stop. And I understand that, you know, it's, we want to keep our students. We want to get those FTE funds. So therefore we want to sit there and try to get them, let the parents do what they want and get them into the Citrus Virtual or the brick and mortar. But there's no reason why they can't go remote for a little while until it's time for the first nine weeks and then go virtual or vice versa. You know, if they're going to go from the virtual, they don't like that virtual, they want to go, they can go remote still. I just, I just feel like it's, it's just too much for the staff. We're already feeling stressed because, oh, and I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. Victoria Smith had just gotten the Education Association President, because that's who I'm speaking at, not as a teacher. But it's just way too much stress. We're feeling so much stress, so much pressure and trying to do all this new stuff and the technology is, you know, constant, something new, something new, something new. And then like today, it broke down. So I mean, it's just very, very difficult to add more when you're constantly switching students. So I'm just saying, can we stop? Can you please stop? And just tell the parents, I'm sorry, you have to wait now until the end. Okay, so that's that one.
Can I press that? So let me just share, you know, when we had the plan approved and we had submitted the plan, we did receive a call from Department of Education. And one of the pieces that they had us put in the plan, they wanted reassurances that students would be able to move from virtual to brick and mortar. That was very, very important to them because we had put in there and we totally understand the frustration from the teachers. We're frustrated on our end, just trying to schedule that we wanted to say at the end of the nine weeks or at the end of the semester. We were told, we want to make sure that you know, if parents want to make a choice to make a move from one to the other, we provide that option for parents to be able to move back and forth. And so as we understand that, we also have to honor what we were asked to do from the Department of Education.
Dr. Heber, are you saying we submitted with what Ms. Smith is suggesting? We submitted having a deadline and the state rejected that?
Well, yeah, that's, yes.
And so then the state has basically set an expectation that we have to allow that fluid transfer of students. Otherwise, the plan wouldn't have been approved?
Yes. I guess I would use the term modify, but rejected is probably a correct term, but yes, we have.
And I'm just, I'm just trying to make it clear understood. It's not a.
We truly believe and we felt very strongly that we wanted to have a deadline of, you try it for nine weeks, but we heard loud and clear that we were asked to say, you need to be, allow for those students to come and go as necessary because of being in the pandemic and because of students not sure of what it would look like and wanted that flexibility.
And that's why I'm giving my wife your email number again, because she, because I get the same complaint at home for the same.
We are under that same frustration as the teachers. I know our administrators, there was a group met today working on trying to balance classes as we have students coming and going. And I know I just received word, we had 10 students today coming back from virtual back to brick and mortar from one of our middle schools. So, but we could have 10 more this Friday at the link, brick and mortar and go to virtual.
I don't know. I've been out of classroom since 15, but usually changes is because they're not happy with their success rate. Are we transferring zeros back and forth as they're moving back and forth? Or do they just consider two weeks a wash and they just get to start fresh? That's a good question. To go upon that as well, to extend on that, then I think we need to be very careful how we evaluate teachers doing this kind. Because there is going to be a lot of gaps in testing when we start having our, if the state still requires a test, hopefully not, but if they do, there's going to be a lot of gaps.
That's the calendar.
Yes. And I mean, for, you know, again, we, a lot of us did not get the floor of the virtual curriculum to even try to align things. So it's just until, until late, I mean, too late. So it's just, I just feel that the students are going to be harming. So we're going to have to try to figure out some gaps filling in. And then also the teachers, I don't think should be held accountable for some of that. And thank you for clearing that. All right. My second thing, if I can say that, is the safety of exceptional student educators. So right now, what we're seeing a lot of or hearing a lot of is our students that are exceptional, our exceptional students are not being held to the same things that our other students would be if they're not wearing their mask. We have students that are tearing off their mask, tearing off teachers' masks, spitting on them, hitting them, kicking them, biting them. But yet, yes, they might get disciplined, but they're still there. We are able now, especially with our innovative learning, to help those students not in school. We're able to have them do maybe part-time or to give them some needs that they need for their IEPs, but still be at home. And I think that's something that really needs to be addressed is if the students are so violent that they're hurting people and they're not wearing their mask, then I think they need to be sent home and go to remote. Because right now during this pandemic, we need to be taking care of our staff as well as the other students that are around them. So I think that should be really looked at. And that's all I came down to talk about. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Linda Steeler. Last, next, last speaker.
That's perfect. Thank you, Linda Steeler. Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Linda Steeler, one of your exceptional student educators. And I feel as there should be an amendment to the Citrus Care Plan. Your emergency plan for face coverings states was created under the advisement of the CDC to reinforce the use of face coverings as well as physical, social distancing. When a student continuously refuses to comply with reminders to wear the mask, they will be sent home and will be required to receive their educational instructions and virtual options. The CARE Plan lists examples for physical, social distancing, such as in the classroom management, hallways, cafeteria monitoring, and outside activities, just to name a few, when feasible. However, it does not explain or determine when a student does not comply with the distancing, what the outcome may be. Some examples of non-compliance for distancing but not limited to, such as my colleague, Ms. Vicki, mentioned, fighting, kicking, hitting, punching, biting, besides desks and chairs, especially attacking school board employees. The Student Code of Conduct, excuse me, pages 13 to 15 lists offenses such as battery or aggravated battery on school board personnel, which have consequences of being expelled or suspended. Last week I was confronted by a student. My administrator asked me, what can he do? And I said, send them home. If they're so aggressive, put them on virtual. During this time of COVID, the school board has an opportunity to ensure all students and staff remain safe and healthy. Students who not only don't comply with wearing a face mask should also be sent on virtual when not complying with distancing, especially when they are attacking or zero tolerance. It would limit the days of suspension or having to expel. It won't count them as not being in school. I understand the administrator's options may be limited. I have the utmost respect for my administrators and all. But however, when is it enough? Your employees have been and are getting hurt. We're only two weeks into the school year. I took two personal dates because I was confronted by a student, but it's not warranted for work in comp yet because I was released. So, we can discuss that when Mr. Diggson. So my amendment for recommendation to the CARE Plan is changing the title of your emergency plan to face coverings and distancing requirements and included explanations of reasons to be sent on virtual for non-compliance for distancing or just create a new policy regarding distancing, which we can implement now and use in the future. I have been asked if I'm pressing charges or suing. And I'm in the school board for 20 years. I have never pressed charges or sued. I understand. But that was not the answer. I told them, policy needs to be changed, not to go sue and press charges. Your employees need help from administration to support staff. Even with all the trainings that is mandatory for us to ensure the safety, the care, and welfare for our students, there are factors out of our control. During this time of COVID, this is also a good time to assure the safety, the care, and welfare for your employees now and in the future. When does your employee have the right to say enough to his salts and press as the student has the right to an education? Thank you for your time.
It is two minutes away from 5:30, which is our public hearing. So Ms. Andruski, can we, can we open the public hearing? I'm going to recess the regular meeting because we have a public hearing at 5:30. So I'm going to recess the regular meeting and I'm going to open up the public hearing. We've got two minutes. Walk slowly. I just didn't want to put Ms. Andruski back up to the podium, but then tell her to move it up here.
Did you recess it?
I recessed the regular meeting and I opened up the public hearing. And then we'll go back to the regular.
Is the millage rate first?
Yes. Thirty more seconds.
Oh, okay. I just came up here because I have to read. Oh, just so you know, the final, you will not be approving the final five-year work plan tonight because it has not been opened at the Department of Education. So we can't submit it to the Department of Education. And so there's no final five-year work plan for you to approve. So it happened last year also, yes. I saw some emails and Mr. Diggson was more involved in it than I was, obviously. And it's like, is it maybe a week and then, oh, maybe a couple more weeks, but it's not today. Sixty-six other counties that are in the same vote. So, yes, ma'am.
Next meeting, right?
I promised nothing for that.
Ready for our millage rates then?
Do you need a script? I was going to flip it, but I was waiting with you. I'm hearing the sex one.
Oh, there it is. The purpose of this meeting is to adopt the final millage rate and final budget of Citrus County School Board for the fiscal year 2020-2021. Millage rates are at 4.4300 for operating purposes and 1.5000 for capital outlay purposes, or a total of 5.9300 mils. The final budget for fiscal year 2020-2021 is a total of $264,835,960. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board as to the millage levy or the budget proposed for the 2020-2021 fiscal year? Is there a motion to include the supplemental millage rate of 0.7480 mils and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.5000 mils in the resolution determining revenues and millages levy as required by law?
I move to include the supplemental millage rate of 0.7480 mils and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.5000 mils in the resolution determining revenues and millages levy as required by law.
A second motion. I have a motion by Mrs. Bryant and a second by Mrs. Powers to include the supplemental millage rate of 0.7480 mils and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.5000 mils in the resolution determining revenues and millages levy as required by law. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Resolution of the District School Board of Citrus County, Florida, determining the amount of revenues to be produced and the millage to be levied for the general fund for the district local capital improvement fund and for district debt service funds for the fiscal year, beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30 of 2021. Whereas Section 101.1.04 Florida statute requires that upon receipt of the certificate of the property appraiser giving the assessed valuation of the county in each of the special tax school district, the school board shall determine by resolution the amounts necessary to be raised for current operating purposes and for the debt service funds and the millage to be levied for each such fund, including devoted millage. And whereas Section 101.1.71 Florida statute provides for the amounts necessary to be raised for local capital improvement, outlay, and the millage to be levied. And whereas the certificate of the property appraiser has been received, therefore be resolved by the district school board that the amounts necessary to be raised, as shown by the officially adopted budget, and the millage necessary to be levied for each school fund for the district for the fiscal year are as follows. Number one, district school tax, non-voted levy, certified taxable value. Description of levy, require local effort, amount to be raised, $41,340,273. Millage levy, 3.6820 mils. Prior period funding adjusted millage, zero. Total required millage, $41,340,273. Milts, millage levy, 3.6820 mils. Number two, district school tax discretionary millage, non-voted levy, certified taxable value, $11,695,487,235. Description of levy, discretionary operating, amount to be raised, $8,398,296. Millage levy, 0.7480 mils. Number three, district school tax additional millage, voted levy, certified taxable value, Description of levy, additional operating, amount to be raised, zero. Millage levy, zero.
Having heard the resolution, is there, and there is a motion on the floor? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Is there a motion to adopt the final proposed budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2020-2021 fiscal year?
I move to adopt the final proposed budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
A second motion. I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Mrs. Bryant to adopt the final proposed budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion?
That was the second by Mrs. Powers. Oh, I'm sorry.
All those in favor of the motion to adopt the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
A resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2020-2021. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, did pursuant to Chapters 200 and 1011 Florida statutes, approve final millage rates and a final budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2020 to June 30 of 2021. And whereas the School Board of Citrus County set forth the appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year 2020-2021. And whereas at the public hearing and in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the final millage rates and the final budget in the amount of $266,346,568 for fiscal year 2020-2021. Now therefore be it resolved that the attached budget of the School Board of Citrus County, including the millage rates, is set forth therein, is hereby adopted by the School Board of Citrus County as the final budget for the categories indicated for the fiscal year July 1, 2020 to June 30 of 2021.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting the final budget?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution adopting the final budget of Citrus County School Board for 2020-2021 fiscal year.
My second motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Diggson, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to adopt the resolution adopting the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the resolution adopting the final budget of Citrus County School Board for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. And we're still keeping the, being open for the policies.
Yes, we have a handful of policy public hearings. The first two are being updated concurrently to deal with the administration of care at student athletic events and practice conditioning sessions. This is an update, first one is an update to Policy 5.60, student injuries. The policy has been revised to clarify that students sustaining injuries at school-sponsored athletic events will be administered to by the procedures of the Florida High School Athletic Association as provided in the current handbook. And be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? I think we. We question this one a lot.
Yes.
Till we get to the final one. We, then I can't motion?
I have a motion of 5.60 to student injuries.
I have a motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by. Oh, public. Three times?
Sure.
Okay. Any comment from the public? Any public comments? Any public comments? Okay. Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 to approve and adopt Policy 5.60, student injuries.
Second one is an update to Policy 5.80, athletics. Again, this policy was revised to include reference to the Zachary Martin Act as proposed by the board at the workshop.
I'll make the motion. Excuse me, I will remind the board that if prior occasions, you adopt them all at one time. You know, if you also choose, you could go one at a time and practice all done at one several occasions.
Okay, we're all real different. You want to, I'll go to the board's end. You want to bring up any questions?
I'll, 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 And I know that, that we're all attuned to Zachary Martin Act and he related all this, so I'm glad that we added that policy to our action, so I'll keep on. The third policy update is Policy 6.20, certification of administration and instructional personnel. This policy has been revised to include documenting the district and state level resources available to assist certification applicants who have not passed the general knowledge exam. That pretty much summarizes it.
I move to approve of Policy 6.20.
Second.
Is there any public comment on Policy 6.20, certification of administration and instructional personnel? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, I have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve and adopt Policy 6.20, certification of administration and instructional personnel. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion passes 5-0.
Fourth policy update is a new policy that's required, Policy 6.35, complaint procedure for personnel and others. This policy provides a complaint resolution procedure for issues dealing with the treatment of personnel due to the alleged violation of existing school board rules or policies, except for alleged violations of discrimination and harassment, which are included in Policy 2.70, prohibiting discrimination, including sexual and other forms of harassment. And this policy is also being updated, and it's next for your public hearing.
I move that we approve and adopt Policy 6.35, complaint procedures for personnel and others, and since they're kind of tied together, also adopting Policy 2.70, prohibiting discrimination, including sexual and other forms of harassment.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve two policies, 6.35 and 2.70. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Third call, any public comment? I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve and adopt Policy 6.35, complaint procedure for personnel and others, and approve and adopt Policy 2.70, prohibiting discrimination, including sexual and other forms of harassment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion passes 5-0. We will now adjourn the public hearing.
Will we take the five minutes?
We take the five minutes? We take the five minutes? So this meeting will stand adjourned and then we'll reopen the regular meeting in five minutes.